Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Dewar. Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. Do I have a motion to excuse?
Motion to excuse, Councilman Dewar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Dewar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will turn the meeting over for a second to the Vice Mayor Garcia for the pledge.
Thank you very much. If you could please stand for the pledge and remain standing after. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you would all remain standing for one moment, I'm not sure of many of you have known, but just the other day in Clark County, yesterday we lost a Clark County sheriff due to responding to a call while on duty, and it makes us remember how lucky and fortunate we are to have the police department that we have here in Beaver Creek today. So in his honor and in his memory, Heavenly Father, watch over all policemen and women and law enforcement officers everywhere. Protect them from harm in the performance of their duty to stop crime, robbery, riots, and violence. We pray you help them keep our streets and homes safe day and night. We commend them to your loving care because their duty is dangerous. Grant them strength and courage in their daily assignments. Protect these brave men and women. Grant them your almighty protection. Unite them safely with their families after duty has ended. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. You may please proceed.
All right, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
Will we approve the agenda, Your Honor?
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of the minutes from the June 27 regular session. Any changes?
Will we approve the minutes, Your Honor?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from June 27 as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Obstain.
I'm sorry. Had one extension?
Extension.
All right. Next is a public hearing, PC 22-7.
PC 22-7, an update of the subdivision regulations.
Thank you.
Ordinance 22-17, an ordinance updating the city of Beaver Creek subdivision regulations by making certain additions and amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Good evening. The case you have before you, this is a, the last time we actually updated the subdivision regulations was in 2000, so it's been long overdue. It was one of our goals for this year, and so last month I brought a draft document to Planning Commission, they reviewed and recommended approval. Within your packet, you've got a 46-page copy of the proposed subdivision regulations. Within that copy, the blue underlined text is text that's new, and the red strike-through text is text that we're proposing to remove from the existing subdivision regulations. Many of the text changes are just definition, slight definition and incidental changes, but there are a few that warrant some discussion. One was, we're proposing to change the way we calculate park fees. That formula was established in 2000, and it was based on census data that they no longer put out, so we've been using the 2000 calculation. But it also, back in 2018, the Parks Master Plan was updated, and they, the new standard is 1,000, or I'm sorry, 15 acres of parkland for every 1,000 persons in the city, and the way our park fees collects, the way our calculation collects park fees is only 10 acres per 1,000 right now, so we're proposing to update that. We're also proposing that as a stagger, so it doesn't throw all of that updated fees on the developers at once. The first two years will be 12 and a half acres per 1,000, and then after year two, then that'll jump up to the full 15 acres per 1,000. Overall, it represents about a 30% increase when we get to that full 15 acres, just because there's a slight, families are getting smaller, households are getting smaller in size, so it's based on the number of units and the average number of people in a household. Another proposed change is, right now we have a requirement that we take any subdivision cases from an application, we take those and get them approved or disapproved within 45 days, and a Ohio Supreme Court case came up and stated that we only have 30 days. So I'm trying to get that, I wanted to get our subdivision regulations in line with what the Ohio Supreme Court said, is a requirement. Also, and this is something we've done in the last few subdivisions, is the elimination of street trees. We've moved those out of, between the sidewalk and the street, and moved them into the front lawn, so that, you know, there's not, there's a clear definition on who owns the tree, who's maintaining the tree, and with the street trees, they can tend to grow and cause issues with sidewalks and trucks that we have out on the street. So we are proposing to eliminate that section and go forth without those. Also, there's a requirement that no more than 30 houses be on a dead-end street, so that we don't get in a situation where they're building sections of a neighborhood and there's only one access point for the fire department. We don't want to create a situation where that they can't get to it if they need it, just because if there's something at one access point, we know the fire department, and they like the second access points, it's important to have multiple ways in for any contingency. So we were updating the way that the language in the subdivision regulations require a second access point be available, once you get up to about 30 homes or so. And so, those are the major changes that we're proposing. Again, there's several minor incidental changes. Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval of the document as presented, and we recommend moving this on to the second reading. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this, the subdivision regulation changes, please come forward. Anyone? In that case, we will close the public hearing and have council input. I'll start over to my right, Councilmember Bales.
Sure. I have a few things, comments, questions. Randy, as I was reading through the document, maybe just a point of clarification, Section 155.007 talks about amendments to the regulations, and you have added that the affirmative vote of the majority of its members, and you've taken out a majority of four votes of the council members in that section. Can you explain the rationale behind that? Is it the, was your intent the majority of the members present at a meeting if there weren't four there?
Correct. If we had six members and four doesn't represent a majority, this, I ran this through the city attorney, and this is just a way to clean up that language, so that there isn't a situation.
So should the language be a majority of its members present? 155.007?
Not if it takes four votes.
Well, that was my, that was my question, you know, is it?
Yeah, I think I got turned, it's majority of, if you only had, you have seven, if you only have five here, you would still need to get four, not the majority, sorry, so I, I.
We removed the majority, four votes of council, which was, which led me to my question.
Yeah, the affirmative vote of the majority of its members, majority of, what I was trying to do was, there's some other language, so I was trying to mirror, so we had similar language in other ordinances we have, and so it's a majority of its members, its members are seven.
Okay, so it is four, so it's.
It is four.
You struck through the part, the old part that stated four.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure that we were still on the same page as.
Yeah, but I think I went, I think I went back through, was to look at our charter and some other ordinances we had, and to try to mirror them together, use similar language. I remember talking to Randy about this, saying, well, I'm trying to be a little more uniform, even though it's maybe not as easy, but, you know, when you think about it, affirmative vote of a majority of its members, there are seven.
Yeah, that's fine, I was just confused when we took out the language of four.
It was, it was just.
Left it at four. Left it, but left it at four.
It said four before, it says four now.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. The other question I had was just in the definition of a private street. We talk about it being constructed to public standards. Is it right for me to assume that public standards are not necessarily city standards?
The public standards that we have, so it's the way we commonly word our PUDs and our zoning regulations, that it's public standards are public standards, so it would be up to city standards, city road standards.
Okay, then there, is there ever a circumstance when there is a private road that is not up to city standards?
When it says city standards, it also has to do with width and street, and tree lawn, well, not tree lawns, but the lawns between the sidewalk and the curb. So there are neighborhoods where they don't have the 26, or the 25 plus 32 at the intersections, they don't have the correct width, and so we want to ensure that streets going forward are built so that they are seamless with what we have in most of our neighborhoods, well, in the public street neighborhoods.
So regardless if they're private or public, they will be built the same?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I'm glad we're upping the park acreage to 15 per 1,000. I think that puts us up in the expectation of around 700-plus acres of parkland, so I like that. And the other question I had was on credit for private facilities. Could you give me an example of what that might entail?
Well, if somebody had their own, if it was a private subdivision, well, if it's a subdivision in their common area and they had their own, their own private park, the intent is to create, the intent of, the overall intent of park fees is to create, you're building more people, you want to have park space for the people you're bringing in. So if they build their own private park within their subdivision, like their common area, and it's for their uses, then that would be credit. Does that, typically that wouldn't happen, it's not really cost-effective for a developer to do it, and it would have to be something special and unique for us to accept it. We're not obligated to accept it, but.
If they were to build a park in the middle of their neighborhood, could that essentially be a private park where the public could not access?
Yeah, correct, like some of the ponds, this, like the Terra Estates Detention Pond that has fish in it, they say fishing by residents only, that's a private park, private recreation facility, I guess, more, more. So yeah, I mean, if it's on private property, they can designate it as residents only, or.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you. First of all, I commend you for going through this thing. I read that, and I don't know how you found all those little syntax errors, but there were a few that I noticed. I just had, I had a question on the streets, and you answered that. The other one, I have a question, and I, this is just my own ignorance, what's a flag lot?
Flag lot is where you have a small strip of land coming out to the road, and behind a regular lot, it's easier to draw, so I wish I had a piece of paper, but a small strip of land back to a larger lot, so this, and in order to get access on a private or a public road, they have that small strip, long driveway, so they can reach the public road.
Okay.
We tend to discourage those.
That's the flag pole.
That's the flag pole, okay.
They live on the flag, and the flag, the pole gets to the street.
Okay, yeah, I read that explanation, and it didn't make any sense, that makes a little bit more sense, so, thank you. That's all I had.
All right. Councilmember Schwartz.
I do have a follow-up to one of the questions that Councilmember Bales asked. In terms of giving credit for the parklands, if the development were to install a private park, or a private pond, or whatever, we are still giving them credit, or we are not giving them credit?
Well, it depends on, I guess it depends on the quality of the land, because we don't, there's, there's standards in, if they donate a mountainside that nobody can use and call it a private park, that's not going to be considered a parkland dedication. So it's really on a case-by-case basis. One instance where Homestead Village up there on Park Overlook Drive, they required to give, they were required to give three acres of parkland based on their calculation, and they had two acres that abutted our Park Overlook Reserve, so they dedicated two acres of, it could have been a private facility, but they dedicated it to the public, and then the remaining one acres, they had to reimburse with cash, so they kind of mixed it. Now, if they keep that as a separate park, as a private park, there could be tax implications on that, so it was beneficial for them to designate it to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up?
Yeah, please.
So there's a difference between a private park and land donated to the city for park purposes.
Correct.
Okay, so I think that was part of the, so if a developer decided to have a five-acre private park that's only allowed for the residents, then they don't get credit for that, am I correct?
Um.
Thank you. That's what I was asking.
Pull that up, give me one second here.
If it's not open to the public, if they, if they do get credit, we want to talk more about it. Okay? I think they get credit. They can get credit. It's on page 33.
Yeah.
Gee, yeah, I mean, they could get credit.
I just want to find the rest. I wanted to find the section before I quote it, but yeah, it's on, it's page, G on page 33, where it says they get, they may, Planning Commission may grant credit for private and park recreation land.
Yep, may.
May, it's not, yeah, there's no obligation for this, and so it's going to be a negotiated process.
The fees or land in lieu of fees are required, it's not a matter of may, so.
I mean, they get credit for private facility, or public facilities, I mean.
But it's not public.
That's where I was kind of going with my question, was if the public can't use it, they build a swimming pool, right, it's a private neighborhood pool, but the general public can't use it, it's just for their neighborhood, how beneficial is that to our city? I mean, it's good for their neighborhood.
Right now, the language in there would give them that full credit that they.
Could, could give.
Could, yeah, could is, yeah. It states the fair market value of the private recreation land shall be credit against.
All right, so might I ask that we review that just a little further before the next reading?
Yeah, certainly, yeah, I mean, we can take a look and.
Okay, floor is yours again, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no further questions.
Okay. Councilmember Curran.
Question's been addressed by Councilmember Bales and Councilmember Schwartz, Your Honor.
All right. Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yeah, just a quick softball, I appreciate the relocation of the tree. I know that's, that's a tough one, having it on the property clears up that confusion, and also for the sidewalks, when those roots grow and then start pulling up the sidewalk, no one knows who's in charge of the sidewalk either, so that's, that's important, so thank you for that. And that's it for me.
Thank you. All right, and this is, I asked my question already, so I'm not going to throw any more out there, but the, this is the first reading of this ordinance, which needs to be moved on to the second reading. Do any further questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to move Ordinance 22-17 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move Ordinance 22-17 to the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. I'm going to turn this over for a second to Mr. Landrum to explain where we're headed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two resolutions that we're going to handle separately, but we're going to handle them, voting on separately, but handling them together with the explanation. These are asking the auditor to certify millage amounts. These are required to be as options to be placed on the ballot in November. These two options, one being 1.75 mils and the other being 2.15 mils, must first be certified by the county auditor, so we're just going to go through, we'll have the clerk read the first one. Mr. Casera is going to come up and just do a brief explanation on why we're doing this tonight, and then we'll let you guys vote on it. After we vote on the second one, the county auditor is here tonight, we appreciate his attendance very much, and we'll have a trading of paperwork in front of everybody. So Debbie, if you want to read the first resolution, please.
Resolution 22-34, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining it necessary to proceed with submitting the question of levying an additional tax in excess of the 10-mil limitation to the electors of the city pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19 and subsection 5705.19G as amended for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, resurfacing, and repairing streets, roads, and bridges, which levy shall be one and three-quarters, 1.75 mils, and which levy shall run for the continuing period of time pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
Thank you. Mr. Casera.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. As you recall, at the last meeting, we certified a couple of millages for the street levy and the options that we were given to you, and we had those certified by the county auditor. Subsequent to that, we updated and recalculated the actual street levy projections and found out that they were understated, so what we had to do was, we brought them back up to the amount we needed for meeting your goal of ensuring the appropriate service levels and capital needs were met. So because of the timeframe of getting those to the county auditor and then getting them on the ballot as we do in the legislation following this, we had to certify them tonight to give them, as an option for you, the updated numbers, and then have that certified and tonight to get it to, if you want to select one of those two items, to meet the BOE Board of Elections deadline for, I think it's August 8. So the auditor, county auditor David Graham has graciously been accepted to come to our meeting to assist us with this, and so again, what will happen is that you'll go ahead and if you'd like to pass these resolutions, and then we'll hand that over to him, and he can certify the amount. The amounts for the certifications are usually the average calculation for one mil and any derivative of that amount, so it's easy to calculate the revenue generated from these two new millage options. And I just want to stress that these are not new options, these are just option one and option two that were modified in the millage that is required based on the new projection, so be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
All right, thanks, Bill. And we're going to go ahead and read the resolution.
She read it, so.
You got both of them?
No, she's read the first one, so you're ready to vote on it, on Resolution 22-34.
All right, this is just the 1.75.
Yes.
All right, so, any discussion on this? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-34?
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-34. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move on to 22-35.
Resolution 22-35, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining it necessary to proceed with submitting the question of levying an additional tax in excess of the 10-mil limitation to the electors of the city pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19 and subsection 5705.19G as amended for the purpose, why do I have 35 again? For the purpose of, sorry, constructing, reconstructing, resurfacing, and repairing streets, roads, and bridges, which levy shall be two and 1,500s, 2.15 mils, and which levy shall run for the continuing period of time pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith.
All right, thank you. Nothing further to add, Mr. Casera? All right, thank you. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 22-35, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-35. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to sign a few papers here before we move on. All right, as you already heard, we have the privilege tonight of having our county auditor with us, and we appreciate that very much, David, it's a, I know it's not a place you want to spend your evening, but so we do appreciate you coming to our meeting, and I.
She's getting it ready.
Okay.
Just one second.
So when you're ready, and when the council clerk is ready, we will ask you to certify Well, Mr. Graham, thank you very much, and if either you or Mr. Casera, if you could tell us what those amounts, the result of those amounts are, please.
Yes, according to the county auditor, the certification for the 1.75 mils is $2,904,000, and the certification for the 2.15 mils is $3,568,000. So those are hereby certified for your consideration.
Three million?
Three million. What did I say?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Three hundred thousand.
Slide through there.
All right, well, thank you very much, and again, David, thank you for joining us this evening, we appreciate it. All right, next, Ordinance 22-16. This is the second reading of the draft property rezoning. Do we need to read that again? Please.
Ordinance 22-16, an ordinance amending the zoning map by rezoning approximately 1.5 acres of land described as Book 5, Page 6, Parcel 8, from R-1A, one-family residential to R-01 residential office.
Thank you. Any changes from staff? Everything's the same? Any questions from council? Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Ordinance 22-16, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 22-16. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is Ordinance 22-18.
22-18, an ordinance to establish a new. 22-18, an ordinance to establish a new special revenue fund in conformity with federal and state laws and generally accepted accounting principles.
Thank you.
Good evening again. As you're all aware, the state of Ohio settled an agreement with the three largest distributors of the opioids as part of the One Ohio Plan. And that settlement was negotiated with those three. And the, we actually had to do a resolution to indicate that we wanted to participate in that program. And I'm happy to say that they are ready to go. And they wanted us to, they've indicated to us that $169,000 will probably be our amount that will be settled over the next 18 payments, whenever and however long that is. But, and the formula, just for anybody that would be interested, is that the state allocates 55% to a foundation to distribute the funds, 30% comes back to the local governments, and 15% goes to the officer, Office of the Attorney General for covering the expenses related to the settlements and the agreements. The state auditor requires us to establish a special fund to place these funds in, to not only monitor the incoming, but also monitoring the expenses that are paid out of there to make sure that they're in conformity with the MOU that was signed by the state and the distributors for the distribution. So what you have before you is the establishment of that fund, 290, and that is all.
All right, very good. This is a popular location for auditors. Last, our last meeting, I think we had the state auditor here, didn't we?
That's right. They keep coming in.
We have county auditor here today, so I mean, it's a hot place for auditors.
Right. Oh, and by the way, I did want to add one thing. 169, it's going to be the total over the 18, 169,000 and some change. It's going to be the total over the 18. We did get our first distribution, and it was 7,291. So I'm just letting you know that we got our 1/18th first share this week.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, this is the first reading of an ordinance, and so that means it's open for public input. Is there anyone this evening that wants to address council on this ordinance? Come forward if there is. Seeing none, we will close the public input, and we will go council time. Mr., Councilmember Curran?
Yes, Your Honor, does the 30% of the money that goes to local governments, our share, Mr. Casera, do we have to set up a department, or is this already determined as to where that, those dollars go?
Well, we're establishing the fund, so the money will go into there. But what we'll do is then, the MOU indicates what we can use the money for.
Yeah.
And once we develop that plan, that's when we'll use that money in one regard or the other. So again, some of the acceptable uses is like for the DARE program, things like that that relate to drug prevention, that type of thing.
We'll be using existing.
We'll be using these funds for those programs, whatever we, whatever we name.
Something new, it'll be, we'll be using it in our existing departments, so to speak.
Could be. They could have new programs or something like that that could come up and develop over the next years that they want to send that money to, to develop a program or something like that. But basically, the money is ours, that we distributed the shares, and it's up for us to follow the guidelines set up by the state and the MOU. So, but we haven't fully developed that plan. I mean, we're in the works. But again, we haven't, I can't tell you right now that we're going to spend the $7,000 this year on X, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
Councilmember Schwartz?
I have no questions, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, that was, answers mine. I was just curious where it could be spent, and that hasn't been established yet, but at least we've got a parameter of what we're looking at, mostly in drug enforcement and things like that.
Right. And they have some vague guidelines, but again, it's up for really the municipalities to determine whether or not their expenditures meet those guidelines and fall into that category. But it's up to the municipalities to determine what they want to spend the money on.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Bales?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia?
No questions, thank you.
And I do not have any questions. Do I have a motion to move this on to the second reading?
Motion to move Ordinance 22-18 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move Ordinance 22-18 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution 22-36.
Okay, just a couple things, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this, these, the next E and F are both what council is the, looking at tonight to place on the ballot. E is the street levy, and F is the police levy. We're going to have, as the resolution tonight is read, it will be, for both, it will be blank. In other words, the clerk is literally going to say for blank amount. That is because it has not been determined. There are four options, if you see on the agenda, 1 through 4 for the street, and three options for the police. After the resolution is read for each, Mr. Casera is generally going to do an overall for both, an explanation for both, but we will be handling each piece of resolution separately for questions and voting, of course. But what's going to have to happen is once she, the clerk reads it, then discussion can happen, and council can then, will have to make, someone from council would have to make a motion to amend the resolution to insert the option that they would like, and it goes through the normal voting. After that happens, we do have copies of the resolution with the amended amount that you have voted on to insert. We will then pass out those copies of the resolution to give council time to review the resolution, and then if a motion is made to approve the amended resolution, thus placing it on the ballot. So a little bit of instruction there on what has to happen per our legal attorney that will.
Well stated.
Well, thank you. So I'll go ahead and have Debbie read if, for mayor. She'll read the first one, Bill will come up, and then we'll start the process of discussion on the first one being the street.
Resolution 22-36, a resolution to proceed to levy an additional tax in excess of the 10-mil limitation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19 and subsection 5705.19G as amended for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, resurfacing, and repairing streets, roads, and bridges, which levy shall be blank, mils, and which levy shall run for a continuing period of time pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19, and declaring the question of the additional tax levy shall be submitted to the electors at the election to be held November 8, 2022.
All right, thank you. All right. Bill, you want to address the four options?
Yes. All right. I just wanted to give you a brief overview. I know that we've been talking about this for at least three or four months now, and we're getting to the point where we need to select what levies can actually get on the May, or the November ballot. And we have to get that over to the Board of Elections by, I think it's August 7th or something like that. But just to refresh your memories about what we talked about, when we originally sat down, we actually had four levies that we were discussing, the street operating between 1.2, the old number, and the 2.15, the revised numbers, and the police operating and equipment and capital, which is the 1.8 and 2.5. We also looked at street capital. You recall those were options 3 and 4, and parks. That was between 1 and 2 mils for street and 1.75 and 2.5 for parks. You'll see, and you're aware, that we decided not to pursue those at this time, that we were going to delay those to get a better handle on the actual projects themselves. And the park master plan is still in the works right now, so it didn't seem appropriate to set that millage until we actually get that master plan. We'll narrow it down to the streets. Again, the original option was 1.2. The second option was 1.5. We just went through the resolutions to update those for the revised projected millage, which now is 1.75 and 2.15 that we just had David Graham certify. Again, the difference between the two is, option one is to maintain the current operating level and maintain the service level for reconstruction and maintenance of streets. We're all aware of what's happening with our bids and the capital components of that, and how the purchasing power of us doing, especially the residential and reconstruction streets where we did between 12 and 13 miles per year, and with the cost of asphalt and other contractual services, we're down to about 6. So we tried to build in enough in the, the option one to cover that inflationary factor for the next five years. Option two is adding additional support staff on top of that, maintaining the service levels. So again, this is the five, we've indicated five, but it's really four, and a combination of that to increase the service levels in the public service department itself. So again, the difference between that by adding the additional support staff is, in the bottom case, the point four mils. So again, I just wanted to go over that. It's a little confusing, because again, I did revise the projected millage and increased a little bit, but that, the concepts are the same. It's still option one is for maintaining the current level of services and providing that inflationary factor, and the 2.15 is for additional staffing. Luckily, the police is a little bit more cut and dry, and we don't have any modifications to this one, but option one in this particular regard is the 1.25. That's to maintain the current operating levels and maintaining the capital equipment replacement program. Obviously, in police, 88% of the budgets is actual personnel cost. A big portion of the other part is the capital equipment and the replacement program they have going on. And this will allow us to continue that operation for the next five or so years. And that's, the projected millage is 1.25. Option two, again, similar to the public services where we're adding staff, officers, dispatchers, that type of thing, for the upcoming budgets, and that would be an additional 5.55 mils to accomplish that and add the staffing to the police department, much-needed staffing. Option three then also includes maintaining, keeping the program, adding the additional support staff, and then also adding the debt service for the public joint multipurpose building funded between the police and the general fund. So that would add the amount for the debt service related to that capital infrastructure. Those are basically your choices. So again, this goes back to what we talked about with our financial strategy, what we're recommending as police and streets have the immediate need. We went all over the projections and the actual dropping below the required fund balance in the next, in police cases in the next year, and street almost at the end of this year will, they'll be below that threshold. So again, we think that's the immediate need, and that's what we're addressing tonight, is placing those two on the ballot for November. And then, as I indicated, you really have two, you have four options, but really two are the modified and the projected ones, the new projections. So again, you have two options for streets. You'll see four in your agenda item and three for police. So again, as Pete indicated, you'll pick one of those and fill in the blank as to what you want to see on the November ballot. Again, we talked about option three and four, which was really the capital components of the street. We were going to delay that for a later ballot, and also the parks, we were going to wait for the master plan to be completed before we bring that before the residents. So again, this is all the, the timeline for getting it on the November ballot is basically we're going to be reviewing what we had certified to the county auditor last month and tonight. And then, once we adopt those, then we'll be adopting resolutions to place the variables, the one option in each one of those two, police and public services, streets on the ballot. You make that selection, and then the deadline, we have to get that over, is actually August 10th, to get it over to the Board of Elections for the November 8 election.
Yeah, okay.
And I thought this would just be interesting for everybody to see, is that currently we're at 8.6 voted millage. Again, it's, the effective rate is 13.07, and so 16.35 of the residents' bill is actually the city's component. If we added both option two in streets and police, that would go to 20%. But I just wanted to show you, because again, people were wondering about how the effect, what the effect would be on the residents' property taxes, and there you kind of have a summary if option two is picked on both of them. So be happy to answer any questions. I'm sorry for the confusion about the extra two options, but I think we got it right in the end, and we got it in time just to get over your selection to the county auditor and to the BOE to get that on the November ballot at the right amounts.
All right. Thanks very much, Bill. The bottom line is, as we move forward though, on our agenda that shows four options, the first two options are not options. Those were the original certification numbers, but they're not options for us to insert tonight. It should be one of the last two after the recalculations by our staff. All right. So discussion. Do we want to do it individually? Or we just want to throw it on the table? Well, I think there should be a little bit of discussion. I mean, this is something, and I'll start then. You know, this is the, the road levy. And when we have asked the public to fund services recently, we told them that we needed five new staffers at the road department. We needed the equipment to go with those staffers, and that it's been many years since there's been any increase in the level of service out of the road department. So I'm inclined to think that we should stay with that mindset, that this is what the city needs to operate in a way that we think the public wants us to operate. So anybody want to add on to any of that?
I concur with those thoughts. I also feel like we need to be striving to provide higher levels of service to our community. And the only way we're going to do that is with five additional public service workers. So therefore, I am supporting of the 2.15 option.
Okay. Anybody want to add to that?
We all get calls, Your Honor, on the condition of streets and wanting to move up, and you know, you can't do that with, with what limited income we have right now. We have, we're not able to do as many streets as we'd like, and I think this is a real effort that needs to be done in our community, the present condition of our roads.
We are currently falling behind because of inflation, because of everything that's going on.
Right.
So yeah, if you want to make a motion, or do you want to add to it?
No, no, you're good. I just wasn't sure how.
But we did. So I will entertain a motion to insert the blank on the resolution.
Councilmember Bales, did you have something?
I, I had one other thing. Vice Mayor Garcia and I were speaking right before the meeting began, and we're talking about millage amounts. And so I think it's important to note that, that 2.15 mils is about $75.25 per 100,000 of value.
And you, I was going to say, you made a good point about the appraised value versus the assessment value as well. So making sure residents understand that it's, the level of assessment for real estate is about 35% of the appraisal value. So we're looking at $100,000 of the assessed value. Just wanted to add that point in there. But no, I appreciate that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Your Honor, I'd move the, the. Your Honor, I'd move the, we put the levy, the 2.15 levy to insert, to insert, excuse the words here.
Yeah.
They have to amend it first.
No, we'll, no, we'll, just, this is what we're doing first.
Motion to amend.
Nope, nope, nope. Yeah. No, I'm sorry.
Motion to amend and insert the 2.15 mills as recommended.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to amend resolution 22-36 by inserting 2.5 mills, 2.15 mills in the blank as written. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. So, here is the, everybody would wish to read this resolution in total. Right. All right. Anybody need more time to, I mean, we've seen this similar thing before, but if there's no more time needed, does, do I have a motion to approve the amended resolution?
Move to approve resolution 22-36 as amended.
Second.
Do we have a roll call?
Need a roll call.
Could we please?
All right.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yep.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. You're welcome, sir. All right. We're moving on now to resolution 22-37. And this is the same, same principle, just a different subject. And we don't need any further explanation on the options that we have. That's already been presented. And so, is there any further discussion on what level of millage we might want to ask the public to support? Oh, I'm sorry.
Resolution 22-37. A resolution to proceed to levy an additional tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.19 and subsection 5705.19J, as amended for the purpose of providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, other equipment, buildings and sites for such buildings used directly in the operation of the police department for the payment of salaries of permanent or part-time police, communications or administrative personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel pursuant to Section 145.48 or 742.33 of the Ohio Revised Code or for other related costs which levy shall be blank, mills and which levy shall run for a continuing period of time pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.19 and declaring the question of the additional tax levy shall be submitted to the electors at the election to be held November 8th, 2022.
Thank you. All right. You want me to start again? All right. Well, we, again, on the same principle that we had the past resolution, option two would cover that. That would be the five additional officers and the necessary equipment to go with five additional officers. That would bring us up to a staffing level of 55. We all heard that that is a level that we arbitrarily, with mostly chiefs and city managers' input, have chosen, but that 60 or more is certainly a much more desirable for our size and our, the way we're spread out in this community. So, by all, most standards for law enforcement standards, we're way down even at 55 with five new officers. So, there is an option three and that option is certainly more expensive. And we have certain issues if we start to increase our staffing to where we are now policing the way our citizens need to be policed as far as protection, as far as interaction with the community at, whether it be at the schools or whether it be at your HOA, just community involvement with our police so that people are familiar with our officers. Space is another question. We have, we are Calea certified and the last two certifications, we, I don't, warning is a strong word, but we have been advised that our facilities are very much lacking in the requirements to meet all of Calea's standards. If you're trying to shove or place more individuals in the same shoebox, you end up with a different problem that you may see with Calea and that is that it's overcrowded. It's already overcrowded, but it'd be even more overcrowded. So, I'm, what I'm, guess the bottom line is I'm saying that I am willing to support option three. I believe it is without question needed, but by the same token, I'll be the first to admit, short-term, we could get by with option two. I think we're better than getting by myself. I think we're a better community than that. So, I'm done. Open the floor, please.
Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback off what you were saying, I think when it comes to our law enforcement and the safety of our community, I don't think getting by is enough. When you see what's happening, when you see what our officers go through on a daily basis, I think they need more support from the community. When I spoke to residents and heard from residents after the second income tax initiative failed, I heard overwhelmingly how much they support our law enforcement and I think this is where we have that support. I think this is where we try to put the levy on at that option three for our officers. We see how hard it is across the board to maintain law enforcement staffing as currently staffed. We're losing officers to retirement, to different professions, and that's not just our city, that is other cities in the area as well. We need to maintain a higher level for our law enforcement and for our resident safety. So, I would support the 2.5-mill levy as well.
Floor's still open.
I will comment. Option one is just status quo and that's not good enough. Option two, adding five new officers, I definitely support that option. We talked about that in earlier funding initiatives and it's definitely needed. The difference between option two and option three from a pocketbook perspective is $24.50 per $100,000 valuation. That's for a new building for our officers. That's for a new multipurpose building for our community. Obviously, not in that millage, that's just the police part of it. But I think moving the city forward, if we're going to be bold and make some initiatives, I could support option two or option three.
Anyone else?
I think we definitely need, definitely two because last year I think we had 40,000 calls, as I recall, about that with the number of officers that we have. It comes down to quality of service and I know our guys work really hard to give that good quality of service out there. They're always there to support the community. I'm, I was looking at both of these options and I think, from someone that's been over there to see what they have to deal with, from a space standpoint and just an age antiquity standpoint, $24 per $100,000 doesn't seem like a whole lot. So, I would support option three.
I would. Oops, sorry, ma'am. I'd like to add to that. I agree with my fellow councilmembers. Option one is not acceptable and that's not what our community needs and it's not what our officers deserve. And so, I have been caught between option two and three over the past week evaluating what exactly it is I'd like to press forward with or recommend pressing forward with. Councilmember Adams spoke to the quality of service that we receive from our law enforcement and it is unmatched. However, I think we all need to recognize that it's on the backs and the sacrifices of the officers that we have. These are officers that are pulling overtime. These are officers that aren't getting a day off. They're being mandatorily called in and it's just not acceptable for us to place that much of a commitment and that much of a burden on the backs of those officers and those officers alone. And so, for that reason, I don't think that option two is good enough. I think option three is where we go because we need a place to show those officers how much we appreciate them, especially the ones that are here now, but the ones in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Curran, would you like to add?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would, I feel the same on option three. I look at that building next door and the security issues. All those cars are out there exposed and somebody who is of a negative mind could do great damage to our facilities because they're wide open. And our people need better facilities with the additional officers that are being discussed here tonight. It seems to me this is something that is certainly badly needed and the community, in my opinion, would, would, would support that. Our police do a great job, in my opinion, and have a high demand.
Thank you. Anything else?
If I could just add on to that, Mr. Curran brings up a good point. It's not the, just the aesthetics of the building next door. It's not the pieces that are falling down. It's the overall security for the officers. It's the issues that we run into and I'm not going to talk too much about security and give anything away, but there are some severe issues we have with the location of the building, the entrance to the building, the exit routes of the building, and I think it's more the safety of our officers and the ability of them to get to our residents in need in an emergency.
Right.
In addition to the fact that it's falling apart.
I'm going to add one more comment and, you know, we've all read in the news over the last few years where police departments are being criticized for certain policies, for certain actions. Being Calea certified, we already were surpassing those standards that the public is asking some other communities to meet. So, the last thing we want to do is to not be Calea certified and so I just wanted to throw that in as well. It is something that is very important to this community. All right. I'll accept a motion, please, to amend.
Mayor, I move to amend and insert certification of 2.5-mill levy.
Second.
To resolution 22-37.
To resolution 22-37.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion and a second to amend resolution 22-37 by inserting 2.5 mills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Same drill. And for the public's knowledge, what we're passing around is the resolution as amended, but how can we do that? We did that, staff did that by printing all of the options so that they could, once we made the motion, now they can circulate the one that it actually is. So, it's not, it's not as though anything was preconceived. Okay. Everybody clear with this? Do I have a motion to approve the amended resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 22-37 as amended.
Second.
Okay. And we, to be consistent, we will ask for a roll call again, please.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. All right. It's council time on the agenda. Councilmember Curran, would you like to start?
Whole lot of things since the last time we met, Your Honor. Certainly, I just wanted to mention a few of them. Certainly, all of us participated in the Fourth of July parade and it was exciting and we certainly had the opportunity to talk with a lot of citizens and then also the special events over at the park and the great fireworks and our sponsors, again, that we want to thank for the tremendous program that we had. Also, having the opportunity over this month to go to Two Swearing Ends here at the City Hall for both the captain and the person being elevated to sergeant and that was really exciting to see advancement in our police department and the good things that are happening there. Certainly, the Zimmer Barn dedication tomorrow night at the Beaver Creek Historical Society, they're going to talk about the needs that are going, the barn is not sufficient, there's no bathroom and there's no kitchen. And there's a realization there, they're going to have to go out and raise the money for both of those facilities, which, as the estimates were given, about $250,000, but I think the community has a wonderful facility there in the Zimmer Barn and it was certainly shown. Also, we, a bunch of us attended the bench dedication at Spicer Heights, that was kind of neat and the recognition of a citizen who spent so much time doing good things in Spicer Heights and the community, just a few. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Little bit of repeats, but I just wanted to commend our staff and our Parks Department on the Fourth of July. As always, it was an exceptional program. The parade was wonderful and it was just a great event and enjoyment by all, so I want to thank them for that. I got the chance to attend the crumble ribbon cutting a few weeks ago, which was delicious and I wanted to welcome them to our community. I also attended the Zimmer Barn ribbon cutting and it is just fabulous to see something rebuilt that was destroyed just a few years ago by the Memorial Day tornado. The architects, the designers, the city did a fabulous job in bringing that back to as much of the real condition as it was before the disaster. I also attended the Spicer Heights Park bench dedication in memory of Bob Marchesak and so, as Councilmember Curran said, he was a very beloved member of the Spicer Heights community as well as our community at large. And so, it was a nice, lovely little ceremony with an ice cream social afterwards. On Friday, this past Friday, I had the opportunity to do the Green County Leadership float, which was kayaking and canoeing down the Little Miami River with a huge group of individuals and it was, it was great, it was such a great experience because I've kayaked that river hundreds of times, but having experts to kind of show you where there's areas of improvement, pointing out an eagle's nest that I had never seen in all the time that I had traveled up and down the river, it was just great. And so, the water was perfect, the weather was perfect and just encourage everyone to get out and to utilize the great resources that we have here in the community. Last and certainly not least, I'd like to reflect on the prayer that Vice Mayor Garcia gave earlier today. I'd like to send my deepest condolences to Deputy Yates's family, to his coworkers, to his family, to his friends. This is becoming too often, an occurrence that we see way too often. In the past year, we've had two officers within this community that have been shot and who have survived and unfortunately, that wasn't the case this time. So, while we did a prayer, a short prayer this morning, or this evening, I'd ask that you continue to pray and continue to keep our law enforcement in your thoughts and just thank them for their service. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Talking about the police department, I had the opportunity to spend some time with them during their SORAT training, which is Single Officer Response to Active Threats, and it just shows the kind of training they go through all the time to protect us and they're always out there trying to better their skills and.
and, and, uh, do better jobs for the community. Uh, that was done in conjunction with the Beaver Creek Township Fire Department, and, uh, it was a, a good activity. Also attended the Fourth of July parade and fireworks, and again, thank you to UES for the, the money that they donated for that, uh, we certainly appreciate that, I don't remember how many years that's, they've been doing that, but it's several. Uh, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting and open house for Premier Miami Valley Hospital's new emergency room, uh, that's a really nice facility to add to our community, uh, it's, uh, it's, as our community ages a little bit, that becomes more and more important, I think, so, uh, and I too attended a swearing in of a new police officer, hopefully there'll be more coming, and the promotion of a sergeant, uh, just recently, so, uh, Sergeant Holly is, uh, I, I'm really pleased to see him move up. I also attended the Crumble Cookies ribbon cutting, uh, and I say, if you, if you go there, it's great, please support them, but don't eat the whole cookie all at once.
Wow.
Uh, I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for the newly rebuilt Zimmer Tobias Barn at Wordinger Park, uh, it's great to see so many people that came out and, uh, they did an outstanding job rebuilding that, and, uh, special thanks to Kim Farrell for, uh, all her efforts on that, because I know she put a lot of time and effort into that. And the dedication for the bench for Bob Marchesack, uh, I didn't know him personally, but we kind of shared a little bit of the same history, he was in the J.C.'s, it's just after I got out of the J.C.'s several years ago, so. Uh, also, this morning, I had a meeting, uh, with the police department, fire department, uh, we're putting together a special touch-a-truck for special needs kids, uh, so I think this is going to be a really, it's going to be sometime in October, um, and it's, uh, I'm excited about it because I think it's giving the opportunity for the police department and the fire department to understand a little bit more of how to deal with special needs kids, and for them to learn how to deal with police and fire. We've got some really neat activities scheduled for that, and, uh, I'll give you more information on that as we get closer. And I too want to express my condolences for Deputy Yates in Clark County, uh, as was said, it's happening too often, uh, it's, it's, as someone who really supports law enforcement, I mean, it's, it's, it's like a family, and, uh, to lose one is too many, but to lose the numbers that we've lost is just, it's just horrific, uh, so I, I respect the job that they do, uh, I don't know that I could do it, uh, the fact that they go out and put their, their lives in, uh, in danger every day that they put that uniform on, and, uh, for that, I thank you. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Bales.
Thank you. July must be a month for ribbon cuttings, dedications, and swearing ends. Right, uh, even though we didn't have, uh, one council meeting, I feel like I've, uh, kept up to date with all of you throughout the month, as we've, uh, frequently run into each other at all of these events, so, uh, I echo the comments of, uh, my council members for all of the dedications and, uh, and ribbon cuttings. I wanted to say also that over the weekend, you know, we had a council strategic plan session with all of us, and I found it to be completely rewarding.
It was.
Um, you know, we got to share openly our, our vision for Beaver Creek, which is exactly what we're supposed to be doing, and, uh, I feel invigorated, I feel, uh, hopeful about the community's future, and so I just want to thank you all for that open collaboration and, and thank the facilitator for leading us through that, thank the, uh, city manager and staff that were there, um, I thought it was nicely done, and I think that, uh, when the report comes out, um, it will provide us, uh, a real guide towards, uh, towards creating our future goals for, uh, the community. Um, I'm looking forward to the pickleball ribbon cutting, uh, which is tomorrow at, uh, Lofino Park, eleven o'clock, I think, eleven o'clock?
Eleven.
Yeah, eleven AM, so that's great, uh, I'm also glad to see that the GPS units have been installed on all the new golf carts at the golf, uh, course, that's a, a good improvement, um, that is greatly needed out there and will be a, a great tool for our golf professionals to use and, and monitor, uh, play. This week, I'll also be attending the Green County Water and Wastewater Advisory Committee, and so I'll report back to you if there's any, uh, outstanding issues there. And finally, I'd like to thank, uh, many, many scouts and volunteers in Troop Forty-two that came out on Saturday to support my son, who did his Eagle Scout project at Owen's Place. Um, I'd also like to thank the generous donations that, uh, many of, uh, you and the community have provided for him for that project, uh, as well as Home Depot, who helped support, and the Beaver Creek Township Park District, who also helped support him. Uh, there's a new fantastic bridge over a creek that our community will enjoy, so, thank you.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you, I won't take too much time, because everything's already been said, but I will also thank staff and the city manager for putting on the annual retreat, it was very informative and collaborative, and I think we really made some good headway for the city, I think we gave some good direction for staff, which until that meeting, I didn't think was lacking as much as a clear direction could have been, so I think you guys are on a good path, and our staff is fantastic, uh, they've done a great job over the years, even before that specific retreat, deciphering everything that we, we wanted and needed for our residents, so thank you for that, and also thank you for the Fourth of July celebration, for our staff and parks for putting it on for us. That's it.
Very good. And, uh, in a, to save a few minutes, I think everything has been mentioned tonight, I was in attendance, except for the bench dedication, I intended all these things, and several of them I had to speak, so it, uh, it's always fun, and it's been a busy month, even though we haven't been meeting. But, I want to read a card, and I just got it this evening, that we received, and it's one of the things that makes this job self-rewarding as well as that you're doing a job for the community. "We would like to thank you so much for taking the time out of your busy schedule to celebrate with us the opening of our new store. We are so excited to be part of this beautiful community, Crumble Cookie." So while it was addressed to me, it was meant for all of us, I know, so, it, it's that type of little extra notice that you get from the public that make this all worthwhile. With that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, ditto on most everything that everybody said, uh, it has been a busy month, although without one meeting, uh, I thought the retreat, uh, went very well as well. Um, I was sorry that I was unable to miss, uh, I was not able to attend the barn opening ceremony, uh, my daughter, uh, was sworn in in the city of Miami'sburg as the Assistant to the Chief of Police, so I'm very proud of her and her public service that she's attending, uh, police and, uh, public safety is very near and dear to her heart, so it fits very well with her, and, uh, I was with you at the barn in spirit, so, um, but, uh, just a couple things here quickly tonight, uh, the factory road widening, I'd be amiss if I didn't miss, because as you can see by the pictures, uh, anybody going out that way is going to see a, a lot of, uh, uh, construction going on, so the, uh, contractor has already started work on the project to improve the section of factory road between the entrance of Nutter Park there and the Creekside Trail. Now, the project includes widening a factory road and three lanes, curb, gutter, new storm sewer, and the installation of a new side path along the west side of the roadway to connect the Creekside Trail. Now, this is important, while this is in progress, the Creekside Trail crossing a factory road will need to be closed, and a detour for trail users will be posted during this time. This project is expected to take one year to complete, and some traffic backups along the factory road can be expected while this pro, uh, work is in progress. Also, it'll be a little bit, uh, the bridge there is a separate project in itself, so the big, bridge itself, uh, we tried to get ODOT to do it as part of, uh, the road white, uh, the work with, uh, the, uh, Super Street, but it wouldn't do that, and we couldn't get it timing-wise to take place with this project, but, uh, eventually, the, uh, within a year or two, uh, it'd be after this project's done, we'll get the rest of the, uh, the bridge area, uh, widened, uh, to match what we're doing now, so, don't think we're like, didn't you miss something? Yeah, we're aware, only so much fun. Uh, Summer Concert Series, real quick, at Lofino Park, hey, come, come out, Sunday, seven to eight PM, uh, coming up, uh, if you like classic rock, Ludlow Creek, and a week after that, August seventh, uh, if you go the opposite way, classic rock to country western favorites with, uh, Rick George. Uh, people have had excellent time, if we can stay dry, uh, but, uh, from seven to eight PM, just come out to Lofino Park and, uh, bring your lawn chair and enjoy the music. This was mentioned, uh, this is tomorrow, eleven AM, Dominic Lofino Park, uh, the pickleball, uh, the transformation of a couple tennis courts there, I thank the Pickle Pals for their fundraising efforts, and I would be amiss, one of the major fundraisers, you know, we acknowledge UES all the time, but, as a supporter, but, um, the Lofino family, uh, donated significant amount of the funding necessary for this transformation. We thank all the donators, uh, for that, for supporting it, uh, but there was one particular that was, uh, a significant amount that really pushed the project to be able to be completed, so we thank them for that. Uh, Movie in the Park, uh, again, at Dominic Lofino Park, it's a, a real active park, and we love it, uh, it's a great neutral park, it's not a neighborhood park, but it's one that we, uh, has many amenities, uh, that we, including this stage area, that's where we have the concert, so we set it up for the Movie in the Park, uh, this is going to be August fifth, so it's coming up around the corner, Friday, from eight to eleven, we start the movie around dusk, it depends on if it's, the sun's fully shining, or if it's a little bit behind clouded skies, but enjoy free popcorn while watching Field of Dreams this year on the big screen, kind of a classic, but a, a fan favorite, we find. Guests are encouraged, of course, to bring lawn chairs, or you can bring blankets, movie will begin, again, like I said, approximately at dusk. And I know the results are already what's being placed on the ballot, but this is brand new information for most part, now, so I wanted to take just a second to go over this, and this is the 2022 bid results, we already have, uh, all the major functions are, have been bid out, and, uh, the results are here, we do have a couple small projects still bidding, but nothing to impact it like these. If you notice, the first bid date, that's highlighted in yellow at the very top here, is, uh, twelve fifteen, that was last year's bid, uh, it was bid last December, and if you notice the results of it, that it was, uh, actually 2.9% below the budget, so, and it was awarded, and that was the factory road widening that we just shared. That goes to show you that, though, that was before inflationary factors skyrocketed suddenly early in 2022. So, 'cause here's February seventeenth, it's kind of grayed out, it's grayed out, because we're not able to perform this project. This was the North Fairfield Roads Resurfacing Project, which we budgeted 1.2 million dollars, uh, and it came in at 2.3 million dollars, so it was 71% over budget, or ninety, I'm sorry, sorry, 94% over budget, it was over 1.1 million over, and so therefore, all bids were rejected and it was delayed. Uh, we hope delayed in 23, but we don't know if we'll have sufficient funding to fund this project or not, we're looking at some grant opportunities potentially. Um, April, uh, you got some different projects, smaller projects here came in, and you can see 29.5% above budget, 38.2% above budget, 9.9% above, above budget, and the most recently project that just came in is, uh, the Shaker Town Road Whitening Project, just came in, the results, we budgeted 1.9 million dollars, and it came in at 2.55 million dollars, so it is 34.5% over the original budget. Now, this is a, one of the grants, this is one of the big projects that we got grant-funded, the 1.9 million dollars is made up of 1 million, 50,000 dollar grant, the rest, eight, eight, uh, 850,000 dollars was city-funded. When a grant like this, and it goes over budget by 655,000 dollars, the grant, grantee does not pay any additional, they're only going to pay 1 million, 50,000. So us being, uh, I guess we're the grantee, uh, the grantor doesn't pay it, the grantee, the city is on, uh, we accepted the grant, so we will have to fund the additional 655,000. So not only will we have the local cash match with the grant of 850,000, we'll also have to find an additional 655,000. So when all said and done, the four grants, or the four projects, the last four here, because we're not doing the North Fairfield one, that puts us at a, oh, nearly 1.1 million dollar over budget, 32.9%. So you can see why we canceled the North Fairfield Road Project of 1.2 million dollars, because we knew back then, number one, to not pay a million dollars over what we had, but we knew that we were going to need, because of what we were seeing in the economy and with the bids, that we were going to need that extra money to fund the other projects, and it's almost to the dollar that we had to use that. Uh, in addition, just two more quick things, the annual curb and resurfacing program, this was mentioned earlier, this was awarded, the pavement, pavement unit cost increased by 25% over 2011, 2021, sorry, it dropped below six miles annually, so as it was stated early, we're, earlier, we're used to doing 12 to 15 miles of road, uh, a year, average. With that drastic price increases, we can now only do about six. Now, this curb program got done early, and they had a little extra left, because it's all depending on quantities of what actually, how much concrete you actually use, how much asphalt you actually use. Uh, so we will be able now to utilize one more mile of, uh, pave, of paving, so we will do now seven, uh, but again, a far cry from what we were doing, uh, prior because of these inflated costs. Also, with pressure, uh, the other thing that just came in, uh, late last week, was the salt price. So salt prices, uh, last year were 53 dollars and 14 cents per ton, now it is a new price that is bidded out, is eight, 86 dollars and 81 cents per ton, that is a 61.2% increase in salt prices. So, uh, let's hope we have a light winter, uh, you know, and sometimes light winters, you don't have to have a major snowfall to have snow, a lot of salt used, sometimes those 31, 30 degrees, 32 degrees snowfalls that spit in all night long, you have to keep salt down, and it washes away, sometimes the rain, so we can still have a, a mild, relatively mild winter, and still you go through a lot of salt because of the volume of precipitation that happens. Uh, but I just wanted to review, those were the final bid results, this is a lot why council has, uh, heard the, these numbers and, and are realizing what has happened and the, the strain on the levy dollars, um, and what's, what's coming. And what's unfortunate is, as the bid, as, uh, uh, salt prices go up and as bid, uh, especially levy grant funds that we have to do, uh, those take the, put the pressure on to the resurfacing program, because there could be a time that we would be forced to, we have to have salt money, and we have to have this grant, because we can't give it back, that the, uh, curb and resurfacing, uh, program would have to be reduced in a year or two, and we don't want to have to do that, because it's already strained, but if we find ourselves in a bind for money, it is something that we could find ourselves cutting back even further on to fit into a grant or to fit paying for salt. And, uh, again, I think these levy, uh, what you pass tonight, uh, both options would take into consideration some of those inflationary factors to help relieve some of this stress to get us back on somewhat of a track. Um, we hope that this is the, this is it on the increases, but, uh, we're pretty much in the same boat as everybody has their household, every time they go to Kroger or whatever, see another price increase and go, holy cow, uh, that's about our reaction on this stuff as well, so we'll keep a close eye on monitoring prices and do our best to save taxpayer dollars. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is citizen comments. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all? If so, please come forward, please come forward, give us a name and address.
Oh, I just want to say hi.
Oh, hi. Anyone wish to address council? Seeing none, we will move on, the next item on the agenda is, is executive session, may I- May I hear a motion, please?
Yes, Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purposes of consideration of the purchase of property for public purposes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Excuse me, Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, there will be no action as a result of this executive session. We will, will reconvene if somebody just wants to stay around, but it's only to reconvene to adjourn and to exit executive session, so. With that, we are in executive session. Thank you very much.